As you know, my name is Robert Gassion from Miss Gassion, 524 Union Avenue, Belleville. I represent Belleville Development Group LLC, who either owns or controls, or is under contract with the owners of property, all the property, within the proposed northeast redevelopment area. Two of the members of the LLC are here tonight. That's Tony Reagan and Rich Bischoff. They are obviously available, should there be any questions directly of them. However, their consultant, who's been with them for over a year, Mr. Peter Steck, is available to testify. I'm sure you recall Mr. Steck was allowed to comment at the September 25 hearing. He's done some additional work, and as you know, he has submitted an additional report to the board. I would appreciate it, however, if he could be allowed to testify in conjunction with that report and probably some responses to some questions raised by members of the board this evening. So I'd like to call Mr. Steck if that makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you. Peter?
Good evening. Peter Steck, for the record. I'd like to, so I don't interrupt later, pass out two handouts that I'll refer to, if I may.
Do you want to swear, man?
You sound very much like the chief of the truth.
I do. For the record, Peter G. Steck, S-D-E-C-K, AD Maplewood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey. I have two handouts that might be helpful. As the board is aware, from the prior meeting, I prepared a memo dated October 8th that I believe board members got, and I'll go through it and add some additional comments. As I view, and these are general comments before I go into the details of my memo. In my view as a land use planner, Belleville reminds me of New Jersey. If people thought that New Jersey was only the Jersey they see from the New Jersey turnpike, they're not getting a good view of what really is in New Jersey. That's a deceptive view. You see these petroleum plants. You see a number of older industrial areas. And the problem Belleville has is that they have great residential areas, but if you travel Route 21, you don't get a flavor of what the town is. And so it's like handicap like New Jersey. If someone knows Belleville just by the state highway, you know, we're not going anywhere. There has to be some way to change that image. This is an unusual piece of property because of its size and its location and its access to state highways. It's unusual, as Mr. Madden said in their briefing. And if the timing is right in that, as Mr. Madden said, there's kind of a global economy now, and things are changing. This proposal wouldn't make sense maybe 10 or 20 years ago, but it's beginning to make sense. As I said before, the developer is not interested in options one and two. Because options one or two are going to get you a small increment. They're going to get more school kids per unit, because that's the nature of lower-rise development. They're not going to give you as many radibles, because it's a cheaper form of construction, stick-built. It's going to get you maybe school trailers. Option three is going to get you a train station, a train platform. It's going to give you much more open space. There are a total of eight buildings shown in the concept plan. Two in the first phase by Washington. Eight, excuse me, total 10 buildings. Two in the first phase, eight in the later phases on the lower part. With taller buildings, you have more open space. This is planned, so when you're on the service, you can walk either on top of the railroad tracks or underneath them. This is all going to be an integrated unit. You won't see a car. The cars are going to disappear. And, you know, some people say, well, this is an urban-type development. Well, it is urban in my mind, in that you can forget your car. You can live here, shop, recreate, and not necessarily own a car. You may own a car, but the feeling, the theme of this is a way that you can live here and walk and do what you need to do. I want to walk through a number of items in the report, but what I want to emphasize is, we've already had a long history with this property. You know more than I know how long this has been vacant. And that's with incentive zoning in place. Nothing has happened. And to a large degree, we're here because of Tony Reagan. He has a vision, and that's the reason there's a plan in front of you. His judgment is that he needs to have the first phase being the more glamorous phase. He needs two substantial buildings on the first four acres, because that's going to set the theme for the entire development. That's the most visible part of the project. And that has to accommodate a lot of infrastructure that might be amortized on phases two, three, and four. But that's going to need the train platform. That's going to need a greater-than-minimum supply of parking. That's going to be all underground. That's going to be the retail. That's going to be the most expensive part of the project to build. And it's going to set the theme. And that's why it is troublesome that the plan kind of flips things. It says, why don't you kind of tiptoe onto the first four acres, and then you can get the higher density later. That's very, an uncomfortable scenario. And it's troublesome, because it compromises, I think, the integrity of the project. The first phase has a maximum FAR of 4.0. That's going to limit the amount of commercial space you have there. And I thought that, you know, the plan says have at least 10. You might have a lot more than 10 in the first phase. So that's a troublesome part of the proposal. Let me run through the points in my memo, and I'm guessing you've had a chance to read it, but I just want to summarize it. Having three options overly complicates it. I know when the board saw this plan for a short time at the last meeting, it was difficult to understand, and it's difficult for me to understand. The phases one and two are not much more than the existing zoning. And the problem with that is that that's going to get you maybe, you know, the trailer on the schools. It's not going to change the nature of the current problems that a lot of older municipalities have. It's, you know, the budget goes up 2% or 3% every year. The taxes go up 2% or 3% a year. The budgets have caps. This is going to be a middling approach that doesn't really change the nature of the land use setting. And keep in mind, the existing zoning is there. Nothing has happened. But the applicant is really interested in the type of development that is both in his concept plan and to a certain degree in phase three, or option three. What I want to emphasize is that, and the board is right to bring this up. You know, you're worried about parking and traffic and all these things. There are a number of checkpoints in this process, because redevelopment is different than normal zoning. And that's what one of the handouts is. What I did is indicate a number of checkpoints. And let me just, they're numbered one through five. And the first one says, "Planning Board recommends adoption of the Northeast Redevelopment Plan." That doesn't have a box, because that's not a checkpoint. That's the answer. That's simply a recommendation. And the governing body calls the shot on this. But the law says the plan has to be referred to you, and again, for two reasons. It's part consistent with your master plan and part inconsistent. So that's one conclusion you make. And the second one is simply, what do you recommend? And you've kind of gone through this process already. You've kind of added some amendments even during this evening's discussion. So you're well on your way there. Points three, four, two, three, four, and five are required steps. And they're steps that you have, you're empowered to do. The governing body is empowered to do. So number two is, the council passes an ordinance adopting the Northeast Redevelopment Plan. And as a parentheses, I'll say that while we, my draft of the alternate language had the PUD as an option, I might invite you to require that it be submitted as a plan-unit development, and I'll tell you why in a minute. But first of all, your first way as a checkpoint is to set standards in the redevelopment plan. And one of the standards is that none of the intersections within 1,000 feet exceed a level of Service D, which is a typical operational level in urban areas. That means that if the applicant doesn't have the train station running or the jitney buses running, and can't demonstrate to you that he can meet that standard, it doesn't get to whatever stage of the process it is. So first of all, there are controls that are in the plan, and they might be modified on this evening's recommendation. The next stage is, and let's say the governing body adopts the plan. The next stage is that the governing body has to adopt a developer. This shows you how unusual the redevelopment process is. Even though this property is owned, they've spent $14 million purchasing and tying up these properties, you have to still designate them as the developer. Just because you own property doesn't mean you're automatically developer. And that's kind of insane, isn't it? But the answer is, that is the redevelopment law. Now, it's more important when you're going to use eminent domain, and that's not the case here. But you still got it. The governing body has to choose the developer, even though these people just own the property. The third stage is a redevelopment agreement. And as I mentioned last time, that is many times thicker than the redevelopment plan. Attorneys work this out. It is a negotiated deal between the township and the developer. Now normally, in normal zoning, someone comes in, applies to the planning board, you grant them site plan approval, and that's kind of the negotiation. Well, this brings the governing body directly into this. And my recommendation is that this fine-tuning about the traffic and the off-site improvements in the schools, that, in my opinion, is better put in a redevelopment agreement. Because it is much more detailed. It can be negotiated with the governing body. If you put it in the legislation, it's hard to change. If you change your mind about what you want, there are going to be responsibilities set up. That document is unique. While some municipalities do redevelopers agreement, it's in the law. And it is a part of the process. I don't know of a redevelopment plan where there isn't a redevelopment agreement with a developer. And then, let's say that's all done. You select these gentlemen as the redeveloper. The plan is adopted. There's a redevelopment agreement. Then the applicant comes to you for site plan approval and for plan-unit development approval. And let me tell you what the developer has to prove to you. Now, I had to prove it to you with a redevelopment agreement. I had to prove it to the governing body, so it's a contractual agreement. But now when they come to you, it's not just site plan approval, but as a plan-unit development, they got to prove, you have to find these four things. That the proposals for maintenance and conservation of the common open space are reliable, and the amount, location, and purpose of the common open space are adequate. That's in the state law. That provisions through the physical design of the proposed development for public services, control over vehicular and pedestrian traffic, and the amenities of light air, recreation, and visual enjoyment are adequate. Number three, that the proposed plan development will not have an unreasonably adverse impact upon the area on which it is to be established. Normally, on a site plan approval, when you meet all the standards, you don't have to prove the negative criteria, right? With a plan-unit development, you got to prove this. So this is not only controlled by the governing body, but it's controlled by this board. And the final one, in the case of a proposed development that contemplates construction over a period of years, and this might be 12 to 20 years, that the terms and conditions intended to protect the interests of the public and of the residents, occupants, and owners of the proposed development and the total completion of the development are adequate. That's a lot of control. You don't normally have that. But as a plan-unit development, according to the state land use law, you have the ability to make those findings. So we're really only interested in something like option three. I think putting option one and two, the developer is not interested in it, because it doesn't think it would be successful. There are multiple layers of review, as I just went through. There are state regulations of building in a floodplain area. You can do that. And one of the requirements is that you get access to the building. You have to show the state that in the flood event, you can still get in and out of the building. So it's not that someone is necessarily going to dig on the lower part of the site down with structured parking. They may be building up. The bonus technique is unduly complicated. The developer is happy to give the town what it's looking for, but in my opinion, it's much better to put that in a redevelopers agreement, where there are issues of timing and other things. And it's easier if somehow priorities switch in the municipality. It's easier to amend that agreement than to put it in the law. So it's not that, we're scared of the bupuses. We understand that you, you know, want recreation space. You want to protect the school system. We understand that. But in my judgment, it's better in a redevelopers agreement than it is in the legislation. I put some sample standards in the back of the memo. And part of it was just, I rearranged what was principal and what were accessories. So part is a clarification. But the important issue is, we would like to build the most potent part of the project first, because that sets the theme for everything else. And that carries a large part of the infrastructure costs that have to be in at the early stage. I would remind the board that, and there was discussion last time about, you know, the graphics. I think that they're somewhat misleading. And that the better view of this is in the developer's concept plan. They would like to do tall, narrow buildings. Why? It's more open space. You get, more people get the views of the New York skyline. It creates a different environment. There are other changes that are needed, and I'm sure Mr. Madden knows a number of them. Kitty Place, we don't want Kitty Place in the project because we're going to drive traffic. That might be an emergency access point. But that might be a place to pull utilities out of it. But we wanted that included in the diagram of the area. We want to emphasize that this is a non-condemnation area. At the end of the day, Mr. Madden is right, I think, that part of this is consistent with your master plan, and part of it is inconsistent. The second handout I gave you was simply quotes from pages 3, 22, and 23. And I'm sorry that I, now that I remember, I didn't give one to Mr. Madden. I just quoted from your master plan that says, there's one, and I'll give you another one. Part of your plan is, part of this plan is consistent with your master plan. On page three, it talks about the goals and objectives to continue to encourage a wide variety of housing types at a range of sale and rental levels, so that all types of families and all income groups can be housed in Belleville to provide for residential growth at current densities, and permit high-density development in limited areas during the time span of this master plan. There is then discussion specifically about Washington Avenue. And it talks about having mixed uses, the fact that there's societal changes in terms of smaller households. It talks about the BG zone, encouraging mixed development. On page 23 of the plan, it talks about the fact that mid-rise and high-rise apartments and condominium units should be viewed as an economic development strategy for Belleville. And it talks about the small number of school-age children. It says, "A one-bedroom, high-rise unit generates .003 schoolchildren per unit, and a two-bedroom unit is .066 school-age children, or one child per 15 units." This is an unusual project, as you already know. And it's hard to get comparables in New Jersey. But it's clear that as you go up to these types of heights, the cost per unit is clearly more expensive, because you have garage parking. You have a different nature of construction. And it is known statistically that when you're near transit clusters, the number of school-age kids go down. I'm going to quote from Who Lives in New Jersey Housing. And anybody can Google this document. It's the Rutgers document. It was a 2006 document. And I want to quote from page 14 of that document. While they looked at all of New Jersey and the census from data, they did a sample study of developments by transit villages. And they looked at 10 developments: West New York, New Brunswick, Morristown, Detuchen, it's going to be Detuchen, South Orange. And they looked at the school-age kids. Now, these projects are not 20-story, 50-story buildings. These are, you know, more modest buildings. But let me tell you what they said. Rutgers has also developed real-world data for New Jersey transit-oriented developments. An important component of smart growth offer many advantages, such as reducing dependence on automobile, on the automobile. Preliminary evidence suggests that TODs generate few public schoolchildren, thus minimizing the impact on local school districts. The TOD analysis proceeded as follows. One, from the Allen M. Voorhees Transportation Center at Rutgers University, the Office of Smart Growth, and other sources, Rutgers identified 10 constructed and occupied TODs in New Jersey. The 10 projects contain 2,183 housing units. Two, Rutgers contacted the elementary and secondary school districts serving these 10 projects and found they contained a total of 47 public schoolchildren. That represents a public schoolchildren multiplier of .02. In other words, every housing, hundredth housing units in a TOD generated only about two public schoolchildren. That's phenomenal. Even if they're 100% wrong, it's four kids. What I'm saying is that there is a huge incremental difference between something like options one and two, and the third option. The taller buildings give you better radibles, more open space, give you a train station, shuttle system. It gives you a much more potent gap between what municipal costs are and what the tax revenue is. And the important thing, again, to emphasize is that the developer's judgment, because he has to get this through the banks, is that the first phase of the project has to be the best phase. That's the only way this is going to work and attract the investors that are needed. So I would encourage the planning board to at least consider the amendments that I suggested, and either recommend that they be put in the plan, or at least recommend that the government, when you, when you look at this whole thing, you recommend that the governing body at least consider these other options when they do it. Thank you.
My first question, right off the bat, was the transit station. I mean, you say that like it's a given, but it's not.
And then the applicant can't, without the transit station, the applicant isn't going to prove to you that he can keep the level of Service D on the highways. It doesn't get to stages three, four, five, and six. So there are, right away, there's a catch in your plan, the way it's drafted. And number two, that catch would presumably be repeated and amplified in a redevelopers agreement. So there's no way that we're going to flood your street with cars to degrade the level of service. That's written in the plan. And it helps everybody. The developer isn't going to lease or sell this project if there's traffic congestion in the area. That's a demerit on trying to market this project. And the bankers know this as much as you know that.
What's your opinion and probability of a train station being put there?
With what's hap, first of all, probably the developer is a better one to ask, because they've been in communication with the state and they've looked at this. But with what's happening here and what's happening up in Nutley and Clifton, it's the same line, there's a lot of pressure to do something here. In my opinion, this project will never have a build-out unless there is a train station there. I think that's going to be an essential part of this. And again, the crucial point is that your plan and the redevelopment agreement and your findings way down the line when we come in for a plan-unit development approval, we have to prove that to you at least three times.
One of my concerns is, I understand all these criteria have to be met, and you have to prove it. My concern is, you guys get approval, and like these criteria aren't met, and the project is stalled. We've all seen what happened with Xanadu. You know, it was an ill-conceived project. It sat there, you know, unfinished, and it's kind of a piece of property. And that's just my concern, that you guys get approval, and we can't meet these criteria, it doesn't get fully built, and...
Let me tell you about Xanadu. I worked for Harts Fountain, because they wanted to build in Loop on Xanadu. They sued. And they said in their papers, there was no way that project was going to work financially. They were looking at per-square-foot rents that were unheard of. And unfortunately, that was, in my opinion, kind of a done project, regardless of the financing. There was such political support behind that. They started pouring the foundations for the parking garage before it was even approved. This is a project that's going to rise or fall on its own. We're not asking for millions of dollars of subsidy. They're not going to start construction unless they have commitments on the project. And Tony Reagan or Mr. Bischoff can describe the process. But bankers aren't going to finance this unless there are letters of intent of retail office users, hotels potentially. It's not going to go anywhere. So this is not a project that we're going to build and see if there's a marketplace for. This is such a big project. There are a lot of sophisticated people that are going to look at this ahead of time. And that's why we're so eager to make the first phase the best, because that's going to attract the interest of investors. And there are going to be very sophisticated market studies. There's not going to be anything put in the ground unless the investors are confident that it's going to work.
By the first phase, you mean Washington Avenue, the four acres there, there's a platform that's proposed, two towers at least proposed there. That's the front piece of this development. And that's going to set the theme for the later stage. But that's the part where there's going to be a train platform already built, even though there's no train yet. That's where there's going to be a lot of heavy-duty infrastructure costs. And as far as the 50 stories, I just look, I think there's two buildings in the state of New Jersey that are 50 stories?
You're right. This is a very large project.
I love Belleville, five generations in this town. But I'm just a little concerned, like what makes Belleville so much different than every place else in the state of New Jersey?
You have 28 acres here that both sides have an NFA on. You can see the New York skyline. This is something that's very unusual. And in one sense, there's a benefit to be the first one in, because if you could get good retail users, that's going to suck up the market. Other people aren't going to get those same retail users. So there's some advantage to being kind of first in line. But again, I have to hand it to Tony Reagan. Other developers that have been around the country, they know Belleville from riding Route 21. And they just zip through and don't look at it. He has spent time in the town, and he believes that this can be a project that works. You're right. This is, I understand your hesitation, because this is not only the biggest project that you've ever seen, it's not only the biggest project that Essex County has ever seen, it is one of the biggest in New Jersey. seen, it is one of the biggest in New Jersey. And that's, I understand your hesitation, but there is significant benefit that can accrue from this. Again, the difference is, options one and two, they're going to give you an incremental benefit that probably will not be noticeable in the future. Option three, or a variant of that, is going to change the way this municipality operates. Right now, the theme is, let's cut costs, let's keep taxes straight. That's not going to change under options one and two, in my opinion. You're not going to see a difference. The third option is going to make a real difference.
Mr. Spack, if you didn't have the transit option in place, you wouldn't even commence phase one?
No, phase one, phase one would use shuttles, and the answer is, that would be the test. But phase one would not have the train station yet. To tell you like what the applicant is thinking of, if the whole project gets an approval, he's been talking to PSE and G to get the overhead power lines underground. They've already had discussions with them for that, for aesthetic reasons. I mean, that shows you the potency of this large development. To be able to do stuff like that is incredible. It's not going to happen with options one and two.
Mr. Regan, has any experience with projects anywhere near this? I'd like to have him come up after you're done, after you're done.
I think you'd love to.
Okay. Yeah, so, so Ford doesn't have any more questions. I'd like to have Mr. Regan come up.
Yes, where in the plane? Hi there. My name is Tony Regan. I live in New York at 254 E 68 Street. And I lived most days in a place called Belville, New Jersey, at number twelve railroad place. So this property that we're buying is contiguous to the twenty-eight acres. It's also about seven hundred feet on the rail line that bisects the property. I'd just like to go over some of the things that were spoken of earlier about the costs on our first phase and the parking that we've spoken about. One of the things that's disturbing to me about this meeting is that nobody really has seen our project, has looked at any of the details of our project. You are under a disadvantage because you don't know it. That this course would have been a whole lot different had we had an opportunity to address you and give you the information that we have offered for more than a year. But I will go on. We've spoken about parking, and that's very, very important to us. Our first phase will have a four-story subterranean garage with a minimum of three thousand cars in that garage. We hope to build a thousand units in the first phase. At one car per unit, that's a thousand cars. That's not what we hope to do. We hope to provide a thousand cars and an additional thousand cars, so you have two cars per unit. And to get to that stage of being able to get those parking places, we have to get an easement, purchase a right-of-way from the railroad so that we can tunnel underneath the line and start to park some of the cars on certain, during that period of time that we are building the first phases and before we start the second phase. If you look at the number, a thousand cars, and then we've got an extra two thousand cars, we're hoping to build as much as four hundred thousand square feet of commercial retail offices in a four-story podium. We're hoping to provide two cars per thousand feet, so that's an additional eight hundred. That leaves us twelve hundred extra parking spaces. What do we need those for? If you look in the brochure that was handed out, you will see that there is some retail there. And if you look closely into a corner of that retail, you'll see an additional floor going down to the railroad lines, to the platform that we are going to build, that will allow people to go forward with the platform. Those additional parking places are to absorb the ridership of the people that will use this rail station to go wherever they want to go. They will have a two-seat ride into Manhattan. Until that point in time, we will have a jitney bus that will take people to the Delaware Station in seven minutes. We're not worried about that piece of it, but to give you the confidence that we are addressing everything that has concerned you up to date and that will continue to concern you, we have all of the documentary evidence to share with you, we want you to look at. Twelve railroad place, that door is open all the time from those properties in Donex. But in the meantime, as far as the costs, those three thousand cars are going to cost at least twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars per car space. What is that? Sixty to seventy-five million dollars. Then we've got the platform, then we've got the tunnel underneath the railroad. Before we start to get into the podium, we're close to ninety-five million dollars invested. As we're cut back to five hundred units in this first phase, it's an impossibility. We cannot start because any kind of profits that will be earned from those five hundred-plus units in the first phase, it wouldn't pay for the infrastructure. So we have to have that infrastructure to allow us to go forward with the rest of the project. These buildings that we have designed today cover less than seventeen percent of the overall project. We have soccer fields, we have tennis courts, public soccer fields, and public tennis courts. We have water parks, a water park that will be taken care of to become an ice skating rink in the winter. What we have to offer is something totally different. There won't be no cars above grade. All cars are subterranean. The number of parking spaces that you're concerned about now, after a while you say, well, why are we concerned? One of the reasons that we have to get under this railroad line is so that we can afford to bring people through the property to Main Street from Washington. All deliveries into this project will come from Main Street. They will never come onto Washington. We have a map that we'd like to share with everybody. This shows various areas in this town that we have located, that we feel that could be purchased by the town with our help, upon which we would like to build parking structures so that the town could end up with its own parking association to buy jobs and take those cars off of the road on Washington Avenue so that those small stores can be encouraged to improve themselves with our help. We'll provide architecture, we'll provide some funds to assist them in changing the whole viewpoint of Washington Avenue. Most often that I've heard as a complaint at all of the meetings I've been to is parking. Everybody's mad about parking. There is no place to park. So few places. You go to the post office, there's one parking space. We like to help, but the only way that we can help is to become a partner, to become somebody that is looked upon as somebody that isn't here just to make the fast buck. I'd like to make some money. But we're here really for the, not this generation, but successive generations going into the future. This whole area is going to change. I came from my home this morning. I must admit, I came at five-thirty, but from sixty-eight street to twelve railroad place, took me twenty-one minutes. I was speeding, not a lot, not a lot, but it took me twenty-one minutes. And I'm there waiting for the sun to come up. The viewscape is, it's a beauty that most people never really realize is here in Belleville. You look to the west, you've got a fantastic sunset. People don't really understand how beautiful New Jersey is. Forget Belleville, forget every place else, but New Jersey, they just drive through it. We had some people talk to us and, I think they were a little bit, they said, Elizabeth, it's so ugly. Well, my partner and I, we look at Elizabeth and say, wow, that's America. That's our product being shipped all over the world. That product's coming in, being shipped from this area all over the nation. We look at things a little differently. We're in the building business, this is all we do. So please, any questions that anybody has, because I've got a dagger here to lift a lot of times, I'd like somebody to ask me a question. I've got answers for you.
One of my first questions, if you guys, what kind of developments have you done in the past?
I came to this wonderful country, I might give a little bio about myself. December the tenth, nineteen fifty-nine, I was a young man. I'd been in America about twenty minutes and threw a wonderful waitress at a little restaurant right opposite where I got off the boat, where the Intrepid is parked today. I came on the SS United States. I got a job. I got a job in a classification I'd never heard of before. Custodian. I didn't know what that meant, but I found out pretty quickly. I became a custodian in a place called Hoboken, New Jersey, at the Greyhound bus station. I'm a construction engineer. I was educated in England before I got here, and I was well able to clean toilets on my knees with my arm all the way down in the S-bank. And at night, I worked in a place called the Kleinbrath House. No doubt, many people here have been at the Kleinbrath House all the time. I was a dishwasher there for a lot of years, excuse me, for a lot of months, fourteen months. And as the buses came in, I would get the newspapers, and I would look at the newspapers classified, and I'd write out, I was speaking to the center, I'd write out my C V and send it up. I got a job with a company called the Rouse Corporation. They were building a place called Columbia, Maryland. So I was in the very beginning when new cities started to flourish around the United States, where people had the imagination, let's do it all here and put all of the amenities together. The cities then, they were getting overcrowded with what? Cars. It was a problem. And they never looked back, it was just starting to turn around. But I went from Columbia, Maryland, I got paid to go to a place called Reston, Virginia. And then sometime during the time that my brother and I were working there, the local lunatic asylum had an escapee who came up to my brother and me and said, hey, let me pay you money to go to California. I said to my brother, these things are crazy. He said, no, listen to the guy, he's serious. I said, no, he's just come out of a nut house. He hadn't come out of a nut house. He was a headhunter. We never heard of those things. We got paid to go to California to build a place called Irvine, to build a place called Westlake Village, El Toro, Damon Point, about seventeen different cities. This is all I've done my whole life. What we're doing here, for me tonight, is just adding another letter to the alphabet of places that I've been, where I try to improve whatever it is I've done in those areas. I've got a decent reputation. I'd like to continue going forward, but it's a fact that we need to have that first phase of our development be the wow factor that everybody else. One of the things that I've found when I go into offices in Manhattan and I talk to them about this project, they say to me, Belleville? Where's Belleville? I say, New Jersey. What? And I say, and in my briefcase, I've got a monopole, I say, take over, can you see that church pile over there? That's Belleville. And they say to me, why would you go to Belleville? And I say to them, because in a not-too-distant future, you're going to be looking across saying, oh, that's Belleville. Because they will be looking right back at you in this building that we're in now. Whether people like it or not, whether they're going to embrace it today or whether they are just going to hide their head and say, I don't want anything, I'm not interested, let me criticize, let me be a gadfly. It's going to happen. The mere pressure of the number of people that are coming here to Manhattan, a million in the next fifteen years, if they knock down everything and then build it all back up to the zoning that exists today, they can build enough room for seven hundred thousand. But that's just the number that's coming to Manhattan. How many are coming to New Jersey in the next fifteen years? We've got an opportunity here to start to set a standard of excellence in the development that we create, in the kind of a lifestyle that we're trying to create with the buildings that we've designed. One of the things that we have here, and you're going to feel it soon because I'm feeling it already, as soon as it gets cold, we're walking around like this. And you can't go outside in your home. This project is designed with a bridge halfway up each of the buildings that connects. It will give people during the winter or during the too-hot summer or the humidity in the summer, it's going to give people the opportunity to run three-quarters of a mile with incredible views of the whole western side of Manhattan, all the way down to the George Washington Bridge, to the Statue of Liberty, and then look around and look at the beautiful mountains that take you into Pennsylvania and those sunsets. They're going to be able to do that, they'll have little picnic areas up on these bridges. Any time of the year, outside, they're going to have places for the younger people to play in the snow and on the ash ring. We're trying to bring a lesson to the rest of the nation on how to redevelop in an area that is in need of redevelopment and is ready for redevelopment and can bring some help and aid to the community in which we would like to build it. Too much?
No. Thank you. And it would be, if this was approved, it would be your plan to develop and not just flip the plan off to someone else. You guys are interested in doing this project.
I'm here, he's here, we're here. Come and see us, seriously, come take a look at what we're doing. I love you for New Jersey, it's not a buck. We're here because we see it. We built it already, we know what it's going to look like. As far as success, you want us to bring in an expert? We can bring those in, anytime. One of the professors at Columbia University has said, hey, let me come in and tell them it's going to be a success. I said, you don't have to tell them. And the reason you don't have to, the banks are going to tell us whether they think it's a success or not. If they can say yes, and they're going to put up the money, that's all the experts we need. There's never going to be a building standing that's half-finished, no bank will allow that. The money comes in, it's sufficient, we already have a bid on the first two buildings that we propose for Tishman. They're ready to come in and start building tomorrow if we had a plan that had been approved. We just like the opportunity to go forward as logically as we would like to see it go forward, without the emotion, with a practical understanding of what it is we'd like to do. And based upon that practical understanding, that's where the decision should come from, not emotion.
How many stories are you proposing for the first phase on Washington Avenue?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions that we've ever saw? Not at this time, we'll open it up to the public. Do they have any questions? Do they have any questions?
Can we quote from this, the last one, the public's face?
Yes.
Can I mention your name, sir? Can I mention your name?
Vincent Frantantoni.
Would you come up, because I can't.
Frantantoni. F.R. Readyhand, B.A.M.C.O.I. 129, not a budget, basically.
It's about several statements I wrote down, if you may, that I have one which said Belleville's under budget constraints. Is that correct?
I, well, it's not only Belleville, but most of the New Jersey water community.
I was dealing with Belleville, can I?
Yeah, I didn't do, I didn't do a budget analysis, but I think it's fair to say that the point I was making is, even if you're not under budget constraints today, going forward with increasing taxes is gonna be a constraint. So, I, you know, I'm not really here to analyze your budget, I'm here to basically make a general statement that Belleville, like most older urban communities, older suburban communities, we have budget problems.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay. You mentioned that this project could generate 17.7 million in taxes.
Correct.
Were you trying to relate that's gonna help us with our budget fund?
Yes.
Okay. I've been in Belleville, lived there 47 years, worked there 51 years, you've been around, let me take 10 years back.
That's correct.
Are you familiar with some of the past projects where we had these same pioneer sky promises? Essex Park, you know where Essex Park is?
Yes.
Okay. At the time, the prior administration and the planners of the, I don't think you were part of that project. But we were told, the developer, like this young man in Jersey, made a nice speech here. He says, I'm going to have, you know, he's gonna have all these variables. We were told that project, which is that much of this project, was gonna generate 4 million taxes and give us tax relief. Now, you said you're not too familiar with the budget, but I am. Ever since that new $4 million in taxes, and like I said, I've been paying taxes 47 years, we've had the biggest tax increase in Belleville's history. Essex Park was built. And I have all these budgets, I testify at budget handles. So, that argument, and first of all, you know, what kind of plan and zoning board means, we're told that we can't consider monetary things.
This will be a development plan.
Or a redevelopment plan. But anyway, that thing, that's out the window. So that, that thing is. The other thing, these pilots, I've been against many of it, this is, you know, you give these wealthy developers, pilots, payment and a little taxes, but you're still gonna budget. You still have payrolls to me. So who pays it? Me and all the other homeowners in town. The burden falls, I'm not, well, these wealthy developers ride around in their BMWs, whatever they ride around with, and we ride around in used cars. So that, that argument's out. Are you familiar with the senior citizen housing project on Cortland Street? That was approved years ago. Down on Cortland and Drawl Street. Well, there was a project, and you're a planner, so you understand, 102 units went through the planning board, I testified at Ben Jam, we're happy to hear you say, 102 units, never built. But you made another statement. That industrial isn't coming to Belleville. Just tonight, you made this statement.
That's true, that's true. I mean, I think that's a general, I think the United States were having.
So a point of information to you and to the council, because some of you live in the town a long time, that business was full, that building was fully occupied with businesses.
What buildings?
Cortland and Drawl Street, on the southwest corner, it's a three-story industrial building, completely occupied with six, seven businesses. The developer threw them all out, gave those movers, he built the senior citizen housing. He never built the houses. And guess what? Within a year, it was filled back up with industrial uses. Go look at Greylock Parkway, Greylock Place. Go look at Roosevelt Avenue, it's all industrial. A garage becomes empty, another contractor takes it up. So if we provide it, industry will come to Belleville and have it. I don't know if you know, I forget that kind of motor, it's historically, the guy down in the valley who built this motor, known all over the world. I remember lots of the actual mayor of the motor. So industry will come to Belleville if we allow it. There's another unit, you familiar with the old school one site?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that was supposed to be, that went through all the profit channels, it was approved, okay, it was approved.
Right.
Last meeting, a few minutes ago, my wife got up and said, what's the school one project? At the time, I answered, oh, we're negotiating with it. What are you negotiating with a thing that's already proved to be built? Something's wrong there, we haven't found out yet.
I know, I wasn't involved in that, so.
I would say six, seven, maybe eight years ago, right across the street from school on Rutgers Street, the vacuum act probably, all went to all the boards, 38 units were approved to be built there. Never happens, okay? Williams Street, we knocked down a town garage, we'd attacked, finished, had to pay to subdivide the property, four legal building lots, two family, builder gets them for a song, 70 thousand, oh, he's gonna build two-family house. It's five years. He's got one started, never finished, he had to go to the tax sale, he wasn't even paying the taxes, and we got a pile of concrete there for five, six years. We were promised, maybe before your time, the old Perrillows, Brighton Avenue over there, that was, we gave my brother 25th anniversary there. Well, the developer comes, he's gonna build.
Mr. Frantantoni, did we get to the point?
Well, this is the point, I'm addressing his testimony.
That's our concern too, there's projects that were not built, but we can't say to this man that we won't give you approval because maybe you won't build.
You've been in town a long time.
Yeah, I've seen all the projects you've opened.
I don't have to go through the list.
I know.
You know, all the projects that went through the channels, we paid developer, I mean, we paid lawyer, we paid attorneys to look at all these things, our building, in fact, our tax dollars had to go to hold all these things, none of these things ever got built. What, and I take exception to Mr. Madden saying that it doesn't generate, you know, one-bedroom apartments. I'll tell you something, you wanna go north about 300, 500 feet, you got a studio apartment with two adults and three children in there. I own several properties in Belleville, I'm a contractor. Let me tell you, you know, I do work for people who own apartment houses, right? You wanna see how many bedroom houses, I mean, one-bedroom apartments have children in? And they're not all legal. You wanna see how many, I think you know, and some of you people on the board, I know you personally, and I think you know, and Mr. McKinney is a police officer, sure he's been in houses, he has seen basement apartments illegal, he has seen attic apartments. So when we give these Rutgers studies, these are professors that sit in their Ivy Towers, and they're not in the trenches knowing what goes on in Belleville. The fire, I take exception that McKinney had to, oh, don't worry about the fire department, because after the site plan, at that point, it'd be too late. It'd be too late for the fire department.
I didn't have a say in it, I made sure, I thought I confirmed that.
Right.
The fire department shouldn't have a say in this.
But you folks are the planners. Before you make a decision, you should have some critical information about the fire department. Not at the site plan site, because you're out of it then. This is the night, you as planners are making a dramatically important decision for the township of Belleville. You know, we're not talking about another 20 condos that's gonna overload our streets. And I live in my class, but there, we have 47 years. I go to work, I go out in my class to Belleville every day. The last four years, I can't do it. Try to get out of my street between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. All this building going on, and it's gridlocked on that street. I think you know, you know the fogs, we've got a school tank with traffic, you know the fog, we've got, try to get off the, a gentleman drowned getting off Route 7 a few years ago in the flood. And then Mr. Tony, I forgot his last name there, says, all this parking is gonna be subterranean. I speak with some authority on the Saint River for 18 years, a trustee of the Saint River Coalition. That's a river on a doorstep.
I'm sure.
That's a river that no engineer, nobody has any control of, Mother Nature. When it's high tide and the storm hits at that particular hour, I don't care what kind of infrastructure you got, and all these retention and detention basins do not work at that level. They do not work at the level of the Saint River because the good Lord makes that water come up. And all these subterranean parking spaces you talked about are gonna be car washes. So, you know, I got five pages of comments, I'm gonna take all your time, but this is such an outrageous insult to make this proposal for, and you, in fairness, Mr. Van Neer, you brought up that failed Zandu project. These projects, you know, are crazy in their initial concept, they just finished Route 3, from the beginning. I tried to get on the rant the other day. That rant from 21 to 3, 40 minutes. Try it, 40 minutes, you know, you can't go, now we're gonna bring in 4,500 more units to try to get on 21 into Route 3? I mean, this is.
All these criteria would have to be met before this project would ever proceed. Traffic studies, environmental impact studies, school impact studies, all of that would have to be met before these guys could proceed. And they have to satisfy the council.
The same developer, the exact same developer was approved a few years back for 135 units in 10 to 12 stores under flood. And then he rebuilt it. That I would agree with, as the fact that didn't have enough parking in itself. I spoke at that hearing too. But if you had scaled that down a bit, he never built it. The same developer didn't even build this little development, which would have been a little better from Belleville. And the other thing.
We're in different economic times and.
Well, it's not getting any better, and his comment about the bank will not lose the money, but, do you see the bank this week, which bank just was fined several million dollars for bad loans and all that? I'm getting 0.25 interest when I talk to the banker, is because of all the bad loans these banks made. So banks aren't experts on development. They own the money, hope they get the money back, and if they don't get the money back, the little schmuck who deposits $50 a week is the guy that doesn't get the interest, and he pays all the freight.
If you would sum up, Mr. Frantantoni.
Well, in sum up, I'm begging you people, please, I've been begging, you see, I've done it before the planning board, I've done it before the zoning board, you've approved things I've objected to, they've all felt flat in their face, and there were much smaller projects than this monster city. Please, Belleville means beautiful village. We are not gonna make it metropolitan New York. You spoke about Hoboken, I can't go to Hoboken. My wife and I and a friend of mine, we used to like to go over there, Arthur's Steakhouse, we used to like it. You can't go there, you can't park. A year ago, we drove around an hour and 10 minutes. Where did we go? We wound up coming back and going to the diner, the TikTok diner, Route 3. So if you wanna bring Hoboken up, it ain't working. And I'll tell you something, I know some friends in Hoboken, I worked in Hoboken a long time, remember the Harry Shachtler Street, he was on the store on Washington Street, when it was a ground credit, and they built it up, and now it's fallen down.
I love Hoboken, Hoboken has structured parking, you build it, you pay a few bucks a park. I love Hoboken.
Let's keep up the beautiful village and let these developers build things that make some common sense and are practical and comfortable reality in a year or two, not 20, 25 years. He couldn't, in fact, Mr. Madden, in his newspaper article, says that project, the 130, didn't get built because the economy changed in just a year or two. Look, how are you gonna know what the economy is in 20, 25 years? So please, just take, thank you very much, but come back another day with a different proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Frantantoni.
Jeff Matternley, M-A-T-T-I-N-G-L-W, 56 Waller. I also own the building across the street from Kitty Place, 85 through 89 Roosevelt This is a fundamental transformation, though. This is no simple decision like Mr. Frantantoni said, this is changing us. I've heard from Mr. Madden and, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Mr. Reagan.
No, Mr. Steck?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. You know, the references are town and municipality. This is city, plain and simple. This is a transformation to a city from a township. And it simply can be considered no other way. You're talking about, you're talking about federal funding vehicles for redevelopment such as pilot programs and transit village money, where basically, they're strictly designed for urbanization. I mean, is that really what our town wants to be? We've been between Newark and the safe all these years, and we have desired to be, we bought here to be a municipality, a town, beautiful village, not big city. A 50-story building with a transit. Let's just start with the transit. If you activate that rail line, how many arteries do you have going over those railroad tracks now in the morning? What kind of volume, even if you put Greylock Parkway into Greylock Avenue, brought it down, it runs into the T at Main Street. You've got so much volume that comes down through Essex County to those highways in the morning. Now you're gonna have rail stops at each and every crossing, a block away from Washington Avenue? Do you know what traffic existing now in the township that we live in, what the result of that will be? Washington Avenue will stop from Mill Street right up to the Park Avenue Bridge. It takes four lights now to get onto that highway when you come down Center Street in the morning. It is overwhelmed. Let's, let's go to the development of the Walter Kitty property. Now, the Walter Kitty property was wisely changed to a planned retail use, no residential. Why? For one thing, it's isolated below the railroad tracks down into the valley where flooding occurs. We've had so much flooding, I'm telling you, my building is there, I go to work there six days out of the week. I couldn't get to my building for two days. Residential, and that is Kitty Place. And when the tide would go out, as Mr. Frantantoni said, God lets the tide go out, it drains down, when it's not excessive flooding like Sandy. And then the tide comes back in and it floods again. No access, over and over, for two or three days at one point. To think that flow from that kind of a development would come out onto Kitty Place is insane. Onto Roosevelt Avenue, and go where? Snake its way through D W up on, trying to get up onto Washington Avenue? All those people, not through an underground tunnel, that can't be their daily eat, rest out of this apartment. 50 stories? I mean, I mean, isn't that a terrorism attraction? A single 50-story building standing next to high-tension power lines and a high-pressure gas line runs on that property? I've been notified of repairs, I'm an owner, I'm close enough to. High pressure, when former town manager Victor King saw us fit to seek to change the redevelopment north of Charoleman on Frank, on Washington, it went to what, eight stories? Isn't that our cap now? Eight stories on Washington under existing zoning, the B, what is it?
B G.
B G.
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah. And so, we're now, we're now gonna exceed this, and that was ambitious. I mean, it was meant with a tremendous amount of resistance. You know, it wasn't an easy sell. Okay, we need to develop on this. All right, we want to attract development. 50 stories and a transit village, a rail line that'll simply paralyze us? Those of us who live here now, we need to get to work. We have cars, we will continue to have cars. They went from 2.2 cars at Essex, I attended all of those planning meetings, planning board meetings for the Essex Park development. They went from 2.4, I think, down to 1.98 or something. And you've got 30 cars. And you've got 30 cars on any given day parked on Golf Course. Bad planning. And we heard from an endless conge of line of professionals who told us that wasn't going to be the case. And I, you know, the, we don't, I don't think we share Belville. I don't think Belville shares the vision of these fine, and I have nothing against people wanting to develop property, I'm, I'm a property owner, business owner too. But this isn't Belville. This seems like something for Jersey City. We're talking, we hear about Jersey City and Bergen on the Hudson. It is, it belongs on the Hudson, not in Belville. Up against power lines with high-pressure gas? The building in the Petco in Edison blew up with a main half the size of it. Residential? In a flood zone? I'm, I'm sorry, but a detention on, for a water runoff? Come on, this is the, you're going to, you're going to hold the river? That's what it would have to hold in order to be meaningful. It simply is unrealistic. Parking sufficient to handle that kind of development? I don't care what you try to say, we don't live in New York City, we don't live on the Hudson. People are going to own cars even in a high-rise in Belville. And we're already overloaded. Our infrastructure is 80 to 100 years old, water mains, you know, come on, we're, we're facing all kinds of things. And now, one thing that really gets me with these developments, and that's the question of ratables. We're going to make so much money. Go on commercial development like you have presently planned for Kitty Property, the developer pays for everything. Doesn't put any kids in our school system, doesn't require state or federal funding vehicles. It develops in market forces, it's attractive. Incidentally, there's no further action on that soil and there's also, they're also in the final stages of, they're injecting the microbes into the oil that they injected into the pollution and they're eating it up. That property is 23.7 acres of ready-to-go and in, and in good economy, it'll fly off the rapid market forces.
The town's been waiting for years and then the big boxes came and left.
Look at your economy. And, and incidentally Walmart left because they wanted residential standard soil. Well, you know, it's approved now, but it was said, what, four years later? Lowe's came and had a deal and it died to the economy. They left a steel structure sitting down in Carney, didn't they? Walked away from, I think, too, that they were developing because of the economy, not because of the soil. Yeah, it is a gem, it's 27 and a half acres, just like the 18 and a half acres of, that you're going to be facing up with a Jergens property. We have gold to sell to the developing country, uh, community and we certainly don't need to do the kind of heroics that you're discussing here. And, and it would simply make our town a whole different place than it'd make in a city and virtually impassable with a maxed-out aged infrastructure. So when you consider ratables and you talk about the legacy of additional fire, police, training, equipment, DPW workers, all based on per thousand heads in the town. Okay, so, commercial, none of it. Legacy costs, none of it. Plowing, recycling, garbage, none of it. It's all theirs. Please do not even consider for a moment, and I'm sorry, Mr. Van Neer, but it sounds as though your questioning is designed as though, well, you know, we'll pass this down back to the council. Isn't it your job to consider what the proper development is for the township of Belville?
Would make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, right.
And have final decisions.
But, but you're also the planning board, right? You're, you're considering existing planning rules and regulations that are on the books? Your obligation is to make the intelligent, pass an intelligent concept that will not allow someone else to do your job by deciding what's good or what's bad. Isn't that your job? Okay, well, that's what I'm asking you to do, your job.
Thank you.
Which is, please, do not allow something. So, I mean, ambitious would be a gross understatement to what we're looking at here. This is fundamental transformation. You know, and so in my opinion, it's just, I don't see how it can leave this room with an eight-story cap on Washington and all kinds of heroics that are going to require a housing authority, that are going to be, you know, dealing with federal funding vehicles? This is very intrusive. Go and look at Montclair right now. They, what are they, 200 million in the red looking for, you know, parking garage money that seemed to have gotten lost in one of those authorities? It's crippled. We don't need to go there. We can develop under market forces and intelligence in areas that are flood plain, that are, are prone, it's proven regularly, it's not a fantasy. Now, when the businesses couldn't get in, everybody said, gee, that's terrible. Nobody had to be taken out in half-track or the front end loaded, let alone a 50-story building up against power lines and a high-pressure gas line.
Thank you, Mr. Madden.
You're welcome.
Phil's Fran Antoni, 129.
Hold on, hold on. Sorry, last name?
F R A N. See that name? See that one on? On a personal note, she'll come with the high-tension wires. When marketing was made that it doesn't affect anybody. Well, it does. My parents lived under the high-tension wires and eight now, eight other homes around them. All of them got cancer and died from it. I did a lot of research on that and the, all the, the electro halters that come off those high-tension wires do affect people. You hold a fluorescent light under them, not connected to anything, and it will light. So when you make your consideration about this project, consider those high-tension wires because they do affect people and if there are children there, it will affect the children and affect their health. And I doubt it very much, it's a pipe dream. You think public service is going to put those wires underground? They're not going to do it. And my, and another thing that I wanted to bring up with the parking, my sister lives in Fort Lee, she lives in a high-rise apartment building. She has a car. And when you go visit her, it takes me an hour to find a parking space, there was no parking. Everything over there is permanent parking, there is no parking garages or anything. She lives near the George Washington Bridge, you cannot get there. So I very rarely go to her home because she cannot park. And that's what should happen to Belville if we allow something like this to be built in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fran. Anybody else?
Mr. Gassiel will be right back.
But there's no, uh, no further questions from the public? If you have a question, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Rita Higgins, R-I-T-A-H-I-G-G-I-N-S. I live at 476 Joralman Street. Please go to J O R A L E M O N Street. And, uh, right up the street. And, uh, I'm very much concerned with residents of Belville, especially those who live in the valley area, uh, from Washington Avenue down. There is a significant problem with flooding. As we know, one gentleman was killed in flash flood. Uh, I'm just wondering how many more deaths are, are going to take place if there is underground parking, people going to two and three cars in a potential flash flood? We all know these things happen and the flash flood happened, I, I don't believe it would happen during a hurricane in Sandy. We have, I get flash flood warnings on my cell phone about, about once or twice a month. And it's a serious issue, I think we should put people in front of dollars. Who's going to profit from these buildings going up? Really? Who's going to make a profit? Some contractors, some builders, the people who own the properties? Is it really going to help residents of Belville? Is that what the residents want? I personally do not want it. I don't think that it is a blessing. I think that the traffic will be, if the traffic is al, is already bad on Joralman Street, I can't complain. It takes me only about two, maybe three hits to get out of it, you know, from Joralman Street to make the left-hand turn to go in Graylock to get to work. But, uh, the parking, the parking is very bad in residential areas where my sister lives. So one time I went there and I had to just drive home because I couldn't get a parking space. I, I actually drove from Brighton Avenue, past Acme, past Wallace Street, uprighten Avenue to Sanford and couldn't find parking there. And then I went home. And I'm not even, that's not even the area we're talking about. I'm very concerned that we're going to take Belville, Washington Avenue, Belville and turn it into what? A city? The yuppies from New York don't want to come to Belville, they'd rather go to Hoboken, there's nothing here to attract them. And I doubt very much if, that we would have this thing finished, we are looking at another Xanadu. So quick overturn for banks being, uh, you know, getting their hands slapped for giving out bad loans, you can see the writing on the wall. Now I expect you all think about it because if this thing goes through, there's going to be hell to pay and you're all going to regret it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further questions from the public? If there's not, like.
I'd like to make a couple of comments if I might. Mr. Chairman members of the board, a couple of comments with regard to what was said by residents. Mr. Fran Antoni talked about the Essex Park taxes. I don't think he has any study that will tell you whether that's tax benefit to the town or whether it's tax detrimental to the town. He also talked about a pilot. There's no mandatory pilot. That will be a decision that the governing body would make. He talked about projects not being built. Well, that's an argument for this project. This is the kind of project that's going to get careful scrutiny, market analysis, studied by any bank that's going to put out this money. And banks don't make bad loans intentionally. And banks don't go through this process without being comfortable there's going to be a building that's successful at this location. This is the different magnitude than those projects that have not been built. History shows that this is the type of apartment, these high-rise apartments, that don't attract a large number of children. That was testified to and explained by both Mr. Madden and Mr., my witness. He said, Mr. Fran Antoni said this was a dramatic decision. There's no question it's an important decision. But this is a recommendation by this body to the governing body. The ultimate decision, the legislation, the ordinance would be passed by the governing body if they deem it correct. Mr. Man, Fran Antoni also talked about the drainage problem. Obviously, he's not a drainage engineer and with today's technology, that issue will be taken care of. There are stormwater management plans throughout the state and they're carefully maintained. He talked about the banks' bad loans. The bank is not an expert, banks that fail. No one in this room has ever lost a penny on money to banks. There's no failure of banks that isn't supported by the government. And right now, the banks are scrutinizing loans beyond belief. If anybody in this room has looked for a loan in the last five years, you can testify to how difficult it is to get a loan today. They're very, very careful. Comment about Hoboken. Hoboken is a successful place. How can you down Hoboken? Mr. Madden, we got up and spoke. He talked about a transformation, no question. It would be a transformation. My personal opinion and my client's opinion obviously is, it's a transformation for the good. It will be a tremendous benefit to Belville should this project be able to go forward. He talked about federal funding. There's no federal funding involved in this kind of a project. He talked about activating a rail line being a negative. I'm sure we've all been to Summit, we've all been to Montclair. Do we think that's a negative that they have a rail line that's active and providing transportation to New York City? It's a positive. He talked about a planned retail use at this location. I learned how to drive in the parking lot of Walter Kitty. And everybody knows how old I am. That place hasn't been used in close to 40 years. Nothing's happened. This is a project that could happen. A terrorism attraction. The last thing in the world I'm about to do to change my way of life or fear of terrorism. I certainly think we all didn't stop flying after the terrorist attacks. We wanted to show that we were brave enough to continue to live our lives the way we lived it. Talked about Essex Park, completely different project. The magnitude of this project is obviously much greater. It's high-rise buildings, it's going to attract different kind of people, it is not comparable. Mr. Reagan testified, I think you understand the kind of gentleman he is from the testimony he gave. I'm his attorney and I was impressed by what he had to say. He indicates he'll make sure there's not a parking problem. And there is absolutely no question, you can have your tax assessor do any study you want, that this kind of a project would provide much money to the corporates of the town in Belville in that there would be plenty of ratables on the plus side for the municipality. The concept, you're going to get commercial, Mr. Fran Antoni, Mr. Maddenley, it's not happening. Nothing tried it, as we all know, at IT and T, they tried and they tried and they tried. Residents has had to be put in there. They'll be trying the same thing right now at Hoffman La Roche. Nothing. We tried at the Hoffman La Roche piece in Belville next to the hospital. I'm sure a lot of work was done by the municipality to try to get a use in there. Still didn't happen. Had to do a redevelopment plan, hoping to get some use in there, but still, they did. One more minute. My clients chose Belville. Why did they choose Belville? The available land, the location, the accessibility of the roads, the view of New York and the big piece of property that's available to work with. That's why they chose it. The decision you make is a first step, as you know. This then would have to go to the governing body for a hearing, they would then have to approve it, they would have to select a redeveloper, there'd have to be an extensive redevelopment agreement and then be back to this board to review every detail possible. So this is just the beginning. And there was discussion about Belville. Belville's always been on the map as a beautiful village and known for its industrial history and its cherry blossoms. But we need something today that we can brag about. And this is the kind of thing that we can brag about. Why did my clients choose this? Again, repeat, the view of New York, the accessibility to the roads. Obviously, we all know there's a return to the cities, the availability of public transportation. Till that's available, my client will have a jitney service. I think you'd be missing an opportunity to do something wonderful for Belville and eliminate properties that have been sitting there fallow for as long as I can remember. You would be allowing a major potential project to proceed and it's not proceeding without market analysis, without studies, without banks doing everything under the sun to assure themselves that this will be successful, without pre-rentals, without everything that would be required. You're dealing with many, many millions of dollars and they're not giving this kind of a loan unless they think it's going to be successful. So the risk is not going to be Belville's, the risk would be the banks and they're not taking that kind of a risk. So again, I encourage you to approve this, recommend it to the governing body. I thank you for the time and attention you gave.
Thank you, Mr. Gassiel. This board has received a wealth of information tonight. Uh, we received Mr. Steck's report, I believe it was either Tuesday or Wednesday. They have a great deal of information for us to, uh, for review. And I would like to, uh, give this board another, uh, another meeting before we make a decision. I think we'd like to sit down, come up with, uh, our proposals and get back to you guys at the next meeting, move forward next month without any further notifications and give you our decision, uh, next month. Next month. Next month.
Just a question, is public hearing, there were, there's no mandatory public hearing, but I assume that you're completed with hearing of citizens and my side.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, to make a motion to, uh, move it forward to the next meeting.
This is November 13th.
Making our decision at that meeting? No further questions, no more?
No, we said we closed the.
Close the call of course.
We heard enough information.
We'll come back here.
We'll come back here, we're going to make a decision.
And that's November thirteenth.
November thirteenth at seven P.M.?
Yes. Someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second meeting.